I call this meeting to order. This is Special Commissioners Budget Meeting of October 17th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in a Commissioner Meeting Room in Newton, New Jersey on One Spring Street. I get a roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
In a moment of silence and a salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We forward a public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail. The such notice being submitted on February 6th, 2020, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the filing, New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. And is also posted on the Fulton Board Maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements, has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. Number five is approval agenda. We have one amendment to tonight's agenda. They're adding an item under number 14, Resolutions A, Authorization to Provide Milling and Hot Mix Asphalt Paving Services for the Sussex County Division of Facilities Management from Riverview Paving Incorporated in the amount of $47,708. I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Space? Second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Staying. Carry. Number six, executive session, there is none. Number seven, proclamations, certificates, presentations, there is none. Number eight is public hearings, there is none. Number nine is public sessions from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment in three minutes or less regarding agenda topic. Please line up at your microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for your record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Staying. Carry. Anyone from the public? All right, motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Staying. Carry. Commissioner comments? Number 10, start with Commissioner Hayden.
I hope this budget works out as well as I'm hoping it does with doing the new system, other than Adam.
Commissioner Space?
You don't listen.
Good.
All right, Commissioner Fantasia.
Only one thing, and it'll be two sentences long.
Wait a minute.
A real gab on yourselves. No, just simply because I was not able to make the last meeting. Bear hunt, first days, 330 bears taken. We're at 13 and a half percent. We want to hit the number of 20%. So the hunt reopens the 4th through the 9th of December, but we are on track.
Good, very good.
Thank you.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Well, I have a few.
I don't have anything either. Number 11 is approval consent agenda, there is none. Number 12 is approval ministers, none. Number 13, appointments and resignations, there is none. 14 is Resolution A, is the authorization by Milling and Hot Mix Asphalt Paving Services for the Sussex County Division of Facilities Management from Riverview Paving Incorporated, the amount of $47,708. Motion to approve Resolution A.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion on this? Millen, Phil? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
All right, 15 is words of contract exchange orders, there is none. 16 is financial 2024 budget. Ron will take it from here.
Yeah, we've got Elka and Mary Lee here. They're going to do the initial overview. Again, this is the overview of the budget. This is all the submissions, subject to change, obviously. And she'll go through all of the what's in here, what's not in here, what we don't know yet, because it's still October. We're still doing a lot of work and revenues are not on the line yet. So this is, this is the high level. This is everything that's been submitted so far. It's after this, we roll up our, we roll up our sleeves and we go to work. So at that, I'm gonna turn it over to Elka.
Thank you. Um, I have the presentation up on screen. It wasn't handed out since we were not here for the week. So I'm not reading them all, I'll go through the highlights. So if you go to, I just wanted to say a little disclosure. The information being provided shows what was requested at the department from division level, which were received in September of 2023. At this point, there have been no changes by the finance department to the division requests. In other words, I did not go through duplications, anything like that. I have not taken my mind to the home and gone through the requests. So this is just what has been requested. Salary wage information reflects the reconciliation between Mary Lee, Budget Director, and the written staff tasked with budget functions. Staff is constantly changing. There's job records that come in every, every other day, every week. So what may appear as vacancies in this budget may not be a vacancy in two weeks from now. So that number is really moving by. So I just want to let you know that the information will be updated in December to reflect any approved personnel changes.
I have a question. So those personnel issues that are there now, the requests, they're staying until December, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that if there's a, if in these documents, that when you look at the detail on your, you know, in your budget hearings, there might be five vacancies. Well, four of them might be in the process of being filled because there's adds out for them. So in December, we'll update it to show that those four were filled and now there's only one. Or other people left, and now there's more vacancies.
And Chris Carney, a question. How many, is there a way to identify those that have been vacant for a few years and not filled?
That would be a question that you can, we can go down on as we have the individual hearings and the first departments and we can find out which ones have been.
And, and we did get that, Herb, so yes, that is my question. We got that information. Christina has that information. There wasn't as many as we thought. But there, we did talk about having a date to freeze vacancies. And I think, as a whole, we should probably stick with that.
Well, that, yeah, there was discussion, but there was nothing officially formal.
Correct, so just keep that in the back of our minds.
And we discussed an issue with that, as if somebody was in the process of, what would happen?
Right. Well, I, right. So continuing about.
So just, so it's a, right now, it's a fluid number until action is taken by the board to make it stop.
And our information that you guys had as far as the vacancies and how long? I mean, some of that, like Elka's saying, has changed.
Sure, 100%, 100%.
And some of that, too, is, is an effect of we changed some of the wages and we went back to recruiting again. I mean, there are some positions, particularly in Bill's area, been open for quite a while in the engineering group, and we strategically went after that. So that turned on another recruiting effort for those. Those are gonna look like they've been there forever, but it's been a reason for that.
Right, and we understand that.
And there's some turnover. There's some people that have been retiring and left. And there's, that type of, that type of churn goes on every day. That's an everyday function for us.
And that's something as commissioners, we'll have to look at. Again, how long have they been vacant? That's a little different animal, I think, because we, we increased that, that scale some way and increased it. But that, we're gonna have to bring that up, I think, in new business next meeting to figure out the date that we're gonna, we want to stop and freeze. All right? Thanks, Herb.
And then I just wanted to say that the numbers do not reflect grants. Grants are a part of that revenue, so that would affect on this budget. So just something to make this simple. This is a high level overview of the current budget of what's been requested. The top half are by sections in our state budget form. First is general government. And the two blue columns, the first blue column is the 2023 adopted budget. The second blue column is a department request. And then the last column shows the up or down increase or decrease of what's been requested. So if you look at general government, I can go over some of just the high overviews of some of the big ticket items that hit those accounts and then attach new details for them in more detail. So general government is total, and this is S and W, salaries, wages, and other expenses, 478,952 each. 340,000 of that is $100,000 increase for city works, which is the, the engineering is getting up and running. There's still agents and consultants because that's taking around, you know, in the process. We've been spending arque money on that the last two years to cover that expense. $115,000 in the office. They're requesting a firewall for their system that could be updated and a new computer system. Whether or not that qualifies as capital, but right now, that's in their operating. And then IT also has 125,000 for some security. Yeah, 24/7 security of the systems, so. And, but for me, with IT, you can get more information on that. We can see where that is. So that's 340 out of 473. And we also have to realize that all of our contracts are in there at whatever that, the ratings work for CWA, for PBA, and it's assuming a percentage increase for non reps. Other departments have also asked for additional increases that can go into the activated hearing. The next is land use. There's a $39,000 increase, that's the planning department. That's primarily personnel issues. Code enforcement, which is weights and measures, contractual. Public safety, total of 309,140. 178,000 of that is, it equates to 102,000 in additional salary adjustments above maybe 2% for non reps. $60,000 increase in entitlement pay for pay for juvenile detention or alternatives. And the EMS, the request for the EMS squads, they ask that we increase their contribution another $1,000 per year to each of their squads, or 16 squads. They will be coming to present lottery, uh, immediate increases. Two years ago, I think it was two years ago, that we increased it another $1,000.
What's the total on that?
It'd be like 55,000, 1,000 each. It'd be a 55,000 each. So that's, that makes up 478 out of 473 for public safety. Public Works, they increase in 1,558,263. 900,000 of that, there's, I broke that, I identified 900,000. 210,000 is for black and labors in four in Public Works and one in tree crew. There's $250,000 requested for the tree removal for the dead ash trees that they, we put money in for Arca to do some of that, so that's continuing along with that. And there's 440,000 in the LSO paid from the S O R sites, three different sites. So whoever meets with facilities, I think that's to coordinate, they can go and look at themselves as to what they say. But that makes up 900 of the, what, maybe. You also have to realize that in our CWA contract, the job groups jumped again for a lot of the CPW positions and facilities positions. So not only are they gonna make up the reasons for the job groups to move up so that has an overall way of. Health and Human Services, Christine Borri is a gold star. She's got a negative, a decrease in her budget in those departments of 115,000. A lot of that is because of the grants that they were awarded, that big grant that we got in the links. So we were, were approved for that, so now we can offset a lot of salaries. Educational Services is up 334,239. The Tech School is requesting $191,000 increase in the second half of this year. Looking for a 3.5% increase for their fiscal year, which half of that goes into this year and half goes into next year. And the College is looking for $125,000 this year increase, which is an overall 250,000, over 6% from the 2022, July of 2024 to June of 2025. And the College and Tech School, they can work with. Other common operating is $2,075. Utilities is up 20,505, or 1%. Capital debt service is up 2.1%, 1% or 364,557. It's just a product of the debt service schedules. This is the last year that it's high and then it's gonna start dropping. We'll start seeing the debt service drop, which will be able to help our capital improvement fund. Bring that number up to two more pages. This is the last year where it's kind of at a high, high level. So that gives you all of the actual requests from your divisions and your departments. And that is a $2,961,184 increase. And then I listed estimated other costs, which includes insurance, statutory, your pensions, your S P I costs, social security, social services, the state psychiatric hospital. I don't have that number yet. November, December.
Can you, can you just explain how that's calculated? I don't know, well, do the number, members know? You're talking about the, the bill we get from the state for psychiatric health. Does everybody recall how they calculate that?
Yeah, it's the numbers of state patients. I mean, it fluctuates, depends on how many people we send, right?
But you can't, you can't get a definite from the state on how they calculate. Just give me the number.
Well, we've been surprised so many ti, that's always been. I could tell you looked at me. Every year I go like that, at like the number, because they, they leave it me.
That's sometimes the late November, early December.
It's, it's like the, the false surprise.
And they do a reconciliation like two or three years at a time. So one year, we lucked out and there was some reduction, but every year, it's just.
Well, there would be a steady increase, but it would be nice to know, even if they gave us a projection of how they calculate. So you could even say, well, okay, if we have 10%, you know, more usage, we could, it could at least make sense. I have a question, though, and, you know, in, in reading the faces and whatnot. Each year, tech and the college come, you know, with, with these requests. Tech's request seems to be the same. That's not really beyond the pale. Do you have any knowledge at this point of the college's request being linked to that obsolete system that we discussed? Now, we were doing call sharing with another school about how they manage. Remember, Herb and I had that meeting with the college and more like on a real tight timeline? Because the system that they're using to, for, to manage absolutely everything, their entire operation, right? That links to accreditation, everything is now obsolete. And the clock is ticking for them to either do a shared service or purchase this incredibly expensive system. So were they specific or we don't know?
No, they give us a very high overview of the requests.
Okay. I was just curious, because before, I mean, I had like a knee jerk reaction to the 6%, but that's the only thing I could, I could project.
Are you, you and Herb are on the college?
Yes.
You know what's interesting? Is that, was that three years at least? Three years ago, they were talking about?
It was probably a year and a half ago, we had the meeting. But they brought it up two years ago, and then a year and a half ago, we had that meeting. And, yeah.
I think it dawned up last year on everybody.
Because they keep trying to squirrel away toward it, I know that.
They have talked to us a little bit about a shared service agreement with us. Unfortunately and unfortunately, some of the things that they're gonna have to purchase with that, we've already got in place. The multi-factor process that we're putting in place, we've already got it. We're in the midst of doing that. Microsoft 365, we're in that, we're in that pool, so.
There's another college that they were speaking to, but I know the cost was outlandish.
Yeah, this shit huge.
Was that something Ramapo, because I know they were talking about?
Yeah, I thought it was, thought it was another community college, but I think it might have been either very.
I thought it was broken down.
Anyway, I'm just speculating, but when you, that just triggered the meeting that we had, is the only thing I could really think would be that drastic of a.
I know that the college we're operating has not asked for an increase in the number of years like.
Yeah, they never do.
Since I've been here, they've had.
That's why I was so surprised when you said that.
They ask for capital every year, but they never, they haven't asked for an increase in the operating.
Any other misnomer we don't know right now? We've been told from the GIF that our, our premium rates are gonna go up with that. We haven't seen those either. They haven't struck those rates. So that certain line items have gone up for us and that's gonna, we're gonna have some effect of that.
Yes, so if you look at my estimated cost, it's 1,461,500. It's plenty of money to increase. That's assuming that health insurance is at a 4.3% increase from what it's already. We estimate that at 5%. It's a, for more. The state psychiatric hospital, I just want to say. And then social services, because we don't pay the full amount of social services, we just pay a portion. We get grant funding until that state document is done. I don't really actually know exactly how much it is. And I didn't put revenue on here because, you know, the year has ended. I don't know what I can actually, it just paid. But as of right now, the estimates that we're gonna put in, the total is 41,455 increases. Which, you know, 1.1 is about, like, percentage on the tax.
What were we last year at this time? Do you have any of the percentages? When, how do, when do we start? I feel like we started way higher.
We never, we never do this, this way where we're showing you all the requests. Like usually I've gone through, like if somebody put in for people retiring, we have a trust for that, and I'll take that out. Like that's what's taken out of here.
Right.
And I know some departments have put that in, so that's gonna lower it.
Right.
And then we pulled out one type of thing that we can do. So we never start with like this whole number, but it's probably similar.
Really? I just, I, it seemed like it was higher, yeah.
But I think it's higher because of the, we've always assumed 2% increases on salaries to be, they're, they're probably than that.
Okay.
So I don't know, I mean, I went through the main things. But this is the next page breaks it down by general government salary weighted in other, all of the departments. I don't know, maybe this kind of kind of going through all that or, and then after that is by, like, the subdivision.
I think we'd need additional information, because if we dig into these line things, that's kind of what our budget here is for, right? To discuss specific positions, et cetera. So, I mean, for, for me, I had a very specific question, obviously, about the college requests or something like that as a, you know, high level. But just speaking for myself, I don't have any questions about these very specific requests to the budget.
I tried to pick out the bigger items so that you kind of know what's told on you, what's the larger amounts. If you go actually, if you go to the second to the last page, you have a library budget. The library has a few. The library is requesting two positions to the bookmobile. One is clerk driver, and then librarian and librarian bookmobile. So we're gonna pick it out. That's the largest portion of that increase from them plus their contractual increases.
You, you said librarian to run the bookmobile?
A librarian.
In the bookmobile.
In the bookmobile.
But I think we can probably take one from the current staff. It's not gonna be out every day.
Driver and librarian, right? That would be out with the. That's out with the bookmobile.
So just a quick question, I know this, I'm not the liaison to the library. If, does somebody drive it there, leave it there, then the library takes over? There's two people in that.
There'd be two people. I don't think we want one person to just.
But I think we can easily bring the bookmobile out with one of the current librarians and not have it out. It doesn't have to be out every day.
But what's required for them to drive the bookmobile?
I don't think you need a CDL.
It is not, it's a van, like a van.
Please don't tell me you're gonna ask the librarian to drive the bookmobile. No, that's why. No, but it's not, I don't think it's gonna be an everyday thing.
For the safety, to get a carry permit and drive.
Is there a, a usage number?
Everybody's librarian in the library.
Bus, how many people?
Let's have a point to bring the library to somebody, and that would be the librarian, right? It's not like a classic book store. Like you're actually going with like a mobile library, with a librarian to like check you out and all that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I don't really know what a librarian is. You know what I mean? I'm gonna have to do research on that.
Have they given a full year budget on those two positions or?
No, they're, they're prorated.
They prorate it, because I don't even know when that thing's coming in.
Yeah, he hasn't prorated because he believes that the vehicle's supposed to come in.
Okay. If he's got more definite notice on the delivery of that thing, that's good news. Because right now, I don't think we were that specific on the delivery of it.
Yeah, so maybe we have a little bit of time to figure it out, but we can get more information.
And also what the intention of the bookmobile is? Like, is it, is it meant to go out like Monday through Friday? Or is it meant to go out like four times a month?
I think it's intentional to.
Yes, that's a lot of money to spend for it not to be tracked.
I think it's more to reach the areas where there's no library, so that they would go to certain places on certain days and where people would know, like Sandiston, for example.
Every Wednesday at the bookmobile.
Like Wednesday, they'll be there in the morning, so people can walk there. And then you order online, you know, order through the website and their stuff will be available.
So there's no bell like an ice cream truck that they know when you're gonna hit it? Sorry, I had to, I'm.
And then they could go to school, that's a lot they could do with. The senior housing, people that can't get out, like the arts for youth, like scrolling reading. So there's a lot of ideas that they have already.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then other expenses, it's 131,534 increase of what was requested. Most of that is split between 43,000 for maintenance and repairs. He now says he's taken over the maintenance of, the charge of what needs to be done. And there's been so much deferment on those buildings that it's kind of catching up. We need to ensure our schedule will be competitive maintenance. And then 56,000 is for additional materials, which is requested every year to break out to 10% of the state average. And then total estimated other costs, 117,439. That's our insurance, our pension, and social security. So your total increase requested is 440,597.
Elka, you want to spend some time, too, on understanding the difference in the tax base for that? Library tax versus the general tax?
So the library fund is funded by the three municipalities because Sparta has their own library. Sparta is funded. Every other municipality is the library tax.
So if you're from Sparta, you can still use that library?
You cannot.
You cannot, yeah.
I got a phone call from a gentleman from Sparta who wanted to know why he was rejected for a library card in Frankfurt. And I explained to him, you were a Sparta resident, you have the library. He said, I don't want that library. I said, that is your library. So no, they can't.
And that tax goes for, for, for resident, right?
It's taxed the same way as your regular real estate taxes.
Okay.
It's a percent.
It's a percent. And I knew it was a percent, I know, and I knew it varied. I didn't know it went for residents.
It's just when they take, you take the total budget from the library and you divide it by the, um, the, you're taking out Sparta.
The point I was trying to make, there's no cause and effect of the general budget versus the library. You do something to the library, it's not gonna affect the general.
It still affects the tax base.
It's tax rate, yeah.
But it's not affecting the numbers.
They do not beat up against each other.
The only thing that crosses is the capital, which is. For the library, library capital is, our general. For the library, library capital is, um, hard to judge.
I'm gonna ask a dumb question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. For our general budget, one point one is about a point, as you said. Here, it's nowhere near that, it's worth four and a half, four point two four percent. So what is that, what is that breakdown for per point?
Well, the increase, um, I mean, this isn't the.
Fifty, every sixty thousand is maybe a point with a library then?
Yeah, every, uh, it's almost six point nine this year.
Okay.
It's one million nine ninety-four, so, and it depends on the, on the amount of the rate, you know, this.
Understood.
And then the, the last page is social services. And this is, um, it's still like partially funded by the county. So the, um, social services department puts together this request, if there's cuts or additions or whatever, it's agreed to. And then they have to fit a state budget form, and then the formula is based on how much each program gives. Because there's, um, different programs that social services does, these things might get from anywhere, and then a department, and another program might get another percentage. So that's all calculated, and then we get what's accounted for portion of it, and then we put that into our, um, general budget, which is whether it's estimates or not. So they're requesting a hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, um, dollars. That's contractual primarily with, um, free promotions. And then their other expenses is down twenty-two dollars. And estimated other costs, a hundred and ninety-five, and that's related again to insurance, um, hers and.
Elke, I just have to ask, what did they cut so that they saved twenty-three dollars?
I don't know, I'll, I'll find out.
I mean, let's find out.
We'll draw it out during the, during the hearing, how's that?
I think that's a stapler right there.
Hey, well, I cut ninety dollars out of the finance budget.
You did? That's awesome. That, that works.
Oh, we suck. And that in a nutshell is the overview.
I think we need to get our pencils really sharp.
You, um, well, I, I honestly think just from doing the budget last year, that we weren't in, this year, we were in worse shape than we were this year. And going into this year, knowing that we have to pay for the negotiation that we did, the contract we did with CWA. It, it's not as bad as I at least anticipated. So obviously, yeah, we all have to sharpen our pencils.
We don't have to shut, uh, shut off the electric at half a day.
Remember, the release was front loaded too, so that kind of took the pressure off this budget.
There's even grants not offsetting this?
Right, we have, we won't get our ratables for a while, right? Our final ratable number?
All of our final ratables, we won't, we won't have our, um, we get our final ratables everywhere. As far as like what our final numbers to actually calculate the tax rate.
Right. So are we depending on zero at this moment? Or do you have an estimated ratable? I know last year, what did we have, four hundred thousand was last year?
Oh, for the amount, um, new construction, I, I don't have that, you know, you know.
So again, what I'm saying is, is it flat right now? And then if the ratables do come in at four hundred or five hundred, then oh. I just thought sometimes you estimate, estimate, and I thought maybe you would go halfway, hoping on that. Okay, I just wonder.
In December, I will have an estimate, or whoever.
Just, just wondering for my own, you know, it'd be nice if it did come in.
Because we just got our added and omitted, so I can usually look at that and kind of estimate things somehow, it's like we're in last year, it's like we're in back.
Yeah. All right, so everybody knows the game plan going forward. Don and I will be tomorrow, and Bill and I the next day, and, uh, Don and Herb are following, and then Bill and Jill. So I think this is a good process. I think everybody who, you know, has their own agency can talk to the people, they know they, they know that department better than the rest of us.
And then hopefully next year, when we go into budget, real budget season, we're all on the same page and we can get it done quicker and.
Yes.
It's a lot easier for everyone.
I'm hoping, obviously, this is the first time, so if we have to tweak something for next year or going forward, we'll, we'll tweak it. But I think this is a.
A question. With engineering, you talked about having some of the positions paid from the grants that we get. Is that how we're doing it, or are we still doing it through the general budget?
You mean cap, I think you meant capital.
Yeah, last year.
I'm sorry, I'll talk about capital, I guess, when we get to capital.
In twenty twenty-three, there's the two new positions, the principal engineer and the traffic engineer are all set by capital. They haven't hired anybody, so we haven't offset anything, but we have it set up in twenty twenty-four.
Same way?
For those.
Two positions. It's been ten months, right? Not, probably not ten months, right? Because we didn't advertise right, right away, it's, it's probably been four months, I take that back. Has it been nine?
It's been a while.
Well, we didn't adopt the budget, so it technically wasn't.
We advertised with how a salary or it was set.
Okay.
And then when it was set, we modified the advertising.
Right.
Both of them were generating.
And, and how much interest did we get? Zero point zero?
No, we, we had one individual interested.
And what happened?
We had two individuals, we had two people interested, one was not qualified, and the other ultimately had interest. Who probably wasn't qualified either.
Okay.
All right. How does the board feel about November sixth reconvening for another public session after all of the individual departments?
Yeah, November sixth is a, is not a good day.
Not a good day, okay.
Yeah. We should probably wait till after the seventh.
Yeah, I know the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, I'll be away.
You're away?
Yeah.
And the week after that is the league, if I'm not mistaken, that's right.
And then it's Thanksgiving.
And we're turkey.
If we're gonna do it in the same, kind of format, we're just have the capital subsidy like, not here. Hey, now there's about fifteen, sixteen million people request.
How do you guys want to handle that? You want to do the same for capital, or you want to, uh, because everybody, everybody respective of what's going on.
We're caring for capital?
Yeah, Herb? Do we need to make a motion for something like that?
Reason for this?
It's not a formality.
No, just put it on the agenda.
You're just discussing. Set a date for, and, and, set a date for capital.
Okay. All right, anybody else have a question before we continue?
Just say go.
All right, thank you guys for coming in.
We have number?
Seventeen?
Seventeen?
Yep.
None.
Seventeen, personnel, none?
None.
I do mark them off. Commissioner Fasano did teach me one or two things. I looked over his shoulder. Eighteen is administrative report.
I'm good for the night, sir.
All right, county council?
I have nothing, sir.
You have nothing. Number twenty is unfinished business, any unfinished? All right, twenty-one is new business. Um, just remind me, Christina, for new business, um, to, what I asked you before, I don't remember.
A bunch of things.
To bring up new business. Anybody calling once? Can't help me out, huh? Herb, deputy, nothing?
Oh, it was the hiring freeze.
Oh, the hiring freeze, yeah, just put the, that.
Oh, for now, yeah, that's what you were talking about, for now.
Yeah, no, no, okay. Twenty-two is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please don't have the microphones, state name, and Mr. Calhoun for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner space, got a second?
Second?
Commissioner Fantasia, in discussion. All favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. Anyone? All right, seeing none, motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, seconds, any discussion?
Who was it, who was first statement?
Commissioner here. Discussion, all favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. Twenty-three, Ronan, is our next regular commissioner meeting is next Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. The Administrative Center. Twenty-four is adjourned, motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Fantasia, got a second? Commissioner space, in discussion. All favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, and carries. Meeting is adjourned at six forty-one.